Game time. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody viewing with us today to the Nevada Community School District's Board of Education Meeting, March 3rd, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I would seek approval of the agenda as it's placed before us tonight to conduct the folks' business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any public comment that wishes addressed?
No.
All right, well, that brings us into our information phase. Tammy Ellis, our new first-year budget guru, has done up a pretty nice proposal here in front of us, and I think she wants to discuss it, so.
Yes, and to answer your question, this year was 1.3877.
Thank you.
So I followed Brian's format that he had. So you'll see a lot of some of the same stuff in here as far as definitions, glossary and such. The first page just kind of talks about the first, last year they made those changes on the taxpayer statement requiring that, and that we have to have two hearings for that. That was nothing different there. The second page will show you the percentage that we're assuming or that we're estimating anyway for this coming year. Yes, okay, cool. And then it also shows the history of the last few years with the state supplemental aid's been. You can see it's always been, for the last few years, it's been averaging 2.5, but it sounds like it's going to be lower this year. With the governor recommending 2. Page three, that's going to show you the general fund levy. And so it's, I still got estimated for this year because obviously we don't know what actual's going to be for that. And then the estimated for this coming year, the recommended anyway, that we are hoping for there. You'll see just a few things. We had 13 students. We increased our students by 13, so that's a good point. We had, we did, our preschool dollars went down a little bit because we lost, or we did, lost four kids. You'll see down a little bit. The AEA is going to show a little bit less just because it's being, it's going to be totally different this coming year. Fiscal 26 as far as the flow through and, is it 90 and 10%, if I remember right, Steve?
Yeah.
Right, yes.
The district will get the 90?
No.
Or the other way around?
Other way around.
So AEA gets the 90, we get 10%.
Yeah.
Neither are.
So this just shows you the student enrollment at the top, shows you some waiting enrollment here with a total. Our district cost per pupil, again, that's estimated at 8,200 for the next coming year. Cool district costs, our categorical funds, no budget guarantee. And then all our dropout prevention, miscellaneous income and such to give you how much our authorial will be before any SBRC additions.
Do you know why our dropout jumped? Almost 100,000, that's.
That would be, well, we had dropout, we had SBRC applications for last year for this coming year.
That reflects some of what we've done.
A little bit, yeah. And then down at the bottom shows the estimated state aid, should it be at the 2.25%. Property taxes, and again, miscellaneous income. They'll show the total general fund revenues at 20 million 379. And I think I put the expenditures in there. Management fund levy, this shows, so out of the management fund, we pay early retirements, insurance, general liability insurance, work comp and unemployment. And I don't have the breakdown for this coming year, I just have that grand total of 536,000, but that would include all those components other than the early retirement. And that was up, that went up 13%. And then a couple definitions on the pebble levy, and I did, I did copy the debt service levy just for some more background information on what was done last year. This would, this would have been the same other than the very last line, the recommended for this year is the 1.7928.
Is that Larry in your conversation with him?
That was actually Matt.
Gillespie?
Gillespie, yeah, that gave me that information as far as what the recommended rate would be. The next page, wait, I can really read that. Will show you, this comes right off of the Iowa School of Finance tool that they have there, they're, they work pretty slick. You just pull up your school district and they already have all this information in here, so. I apologize, I can barely even see it. I don't know what you guys think, but. This just takes you down through the different kind of funding, special funding and such, incomes or tax rates, which we've always been 5% as far as I can remember. And then it takes you down through the combined district costs and such, the cash reserve levy. And you'll see the, excuse me, the SBRC that was pre-approved, that was approved by the board back in November is in there. That other cash reserve levy, that is a standing number that has been in there for the past few years, and I did.
Just a placeholder?
Yep, I did leave that in there. And then, so you'll see a total on that next line there, then you got the instructional support levy for that grand total levy there of the general fund, which would be 10.052. And then you've got the management fund. We've got the management, sorry, the management levy, that's 1.057, and that 636 comes from the page that we were just looking at that shows the unemployment, work comp, early retirements.
How long before we know, as you left us blank, where we're going to be on insurance as, you know, as far as Melissa or Jared telling us?
That's, that she's already, Melissa's already gave me that 536,000.
Okay, that's her number.
Yep, and that was 13% higher than.
Okay, that's, that's why I was hoping that was current and not a guesstimate.
No, that's current. She just didn't have the breakdown for me.
That's fine, I'd rather have something.
Right.
Yeah.
And then we've got, then you got the regular pebble voted, and the regular pebble that stayed the same for quite a while. Debt service, you can see that's up to the 1.793. Then a few of the valuations at the bottom there. Next page would be your glossary, again, just some more information that district cost per pupil, what all that stands for, authorized budget and such like that, supplemental aid. Next page, same way, it talks about solvency ratio, debt service fund, cash reserves. And then the last colorful page here is from FY 20, is from FY 25. And this again is from the ISFIS, Iowa School of Finance, informational services that they provide to us. They get all the information and then provide this to us. And it's just a good overall, you see the different tax rates. You see the different valuations down here, right in the middle. Enrollment, shows you graphs and stuff, the different enrollments.
These rankings are where we are versus all districts?
Yes, yes. If there's, if there's any other information that you guys want to see, just let me know and I can get it gathered for you.
Well, I think we talked about it on Saturday at our retreat. My question is why Matt Gillespie thinks that we should raise our debt service levy when we're not going to call any bonds, we're already pulling dollars in, and the real big drivers are handling either in capital or save. Somebody want to get me to the other side?
Yeah, let me refresh my memory on that email here.
Because if there's something we are doing with the dollars, then we can justify getting those.
Where are you seeing Matt Gillespie?
I was talking.
Yeah, the 1.79, so that is all of our debt that we have coming due in 2026, FY 26. And all of that plugged in there raises that debt service levy up to 1.79.
So if we don't move it to 1.79, we can't service the debt?
Correct, and Matt, on page four, this down at the bottom where it says, by levying the 437, 270, would only result in $36,080 in interest savings. That's, that's from Matt.
Yeah.
And we had that last year as well, and we did not recommend that we do that.
Well, that's how we got to reduce it, because we walked it back. Well, I would have thought, and this is just wishful thinking, that we had kind of passed over a point where, since we're not trying to accrue dollars for callable bonds, that we could leave that alone for a little bit, because, just because. Because those dollars derived from the debt service levy can only buy down debt, anything that the district has accrued. It's, they're not flex dollars, right? Okay. But as you look at that, and as I look at it, and I've been looking at it for years now, the big ticket billing bills that we have are serviced by our saved dollars and our pebble dollars. And we have, what's our balance on our debt service? I mean, we accrued, I mean, what are we holding right now in that account right now?
In the debt service account?
Yes.
If I log into the system here.
Yeah, because I'm just sliding across here. And then.
We have over 1.1.
That's what I'm looking at right here. So we have 1.1 in our debt service right now. Is what you're saying, we have available to pay off debt of 1.1?
That's our obligation that we have to pay this coming year, fiscal 26.
Okay, back to my first question, how much money we got setting in our debt service?
I'm looking that up right now.
Yeah. Because if we're underwater, then we need some dollars.
Yeah, so right now we have got a little, like 1.9 in there.
And to service our debt obligations, you're saying we need 1.144 and change? So we're almost there anyway. Help me, Doctor here, what am I not, we've done this together a long time, where you sometimes get me out of the ditch on this stuff. If I'm sitting there looking at almost the dollars I need to service my stated debt, wouldn't I just be able to leave a levy alone, take in the additional dollars and be fine, and still knowing that I'm going to carry an increased balance? Or have a remainder balance?
Yeah, I don't know if you will or not, to be honest, Marty, I haven't.
We're not here to have, this is where I'm at as far as voting for a levy here going forward, we're here to set an amount tonight, I get that.
We're here to set the ceiling.
Yeah, and I get that, that's, but this is where I'm at as far as saying yes or no.
Well, I think if you set the ceiling, we can certainly get the information that you're asking about.
I'll get the information, I'll go over it a little bit more with Matt.
I think we talked about that Saturday.
We did, we did, I think, yeah, but it's been, that's just hours ago.
Yeah, then I showed, Patty's been looking on that, giving you the breakdown of that.
Well, just, please give me a, you know, you say, oh, we, this is money that we need to have for X or Y and Z, as opposed to nebulous, oh, we need these dollars. I'll say, what's that paying for that we're not already there for? You know, when you give me a there, there, and it's just like, oh, yeah, we want to pay for that. And I consider the source where it came from, he's been historically good advice to the district, so I don't pretend to be wiser than that.
No, but I'll get some information so that it can be understood a little better.
You'll have that prior to having to certify.
Right.
So tell me again, you made mention of this, okay, well, let that go, we've had the conversation. Anybody else want to chime in on this, or anybody else have anything? I just tried to tease out the details that I have or had questions in the respect that with, I mean, we moved the levy up by basically what we're doing with the debt service levy, because we were able to walk back the debt service, pulling it down from 2.70 last year to where we are, but the proposal going forward for this coming year is to move it partially back up going forward. And mine, my question is, what have we got available to pay that amount down? And then if that's not enough, would not be the levy that we're currently operating under be giving you additional dollars to service that amount? We'll get there. Last question, so you got two cash levy, you know, clearly, why do we have two instead of just one?
The one is for the SBRC.
Okay.
And the other one, like I said, that's just been a placeholder the last few years. So I have left that one in there.
Flex dollars, not committed?
It's, it's at our discretion, it's basically.
Discretionary, discretionary dollars?
Yes.
Okay, that's not a new ask. Okay, that's.
No, that's not a new one, that has been there.
That's not a new ask, okay. I'm done.
Exact same amount and everything.
Which two are you asking about, Marty?
On the same, on page five.
Yeah.
Okay, you go up and in the second block, you see you've got two cash levies.
Okay, I see it.
Yeah, now I'm asking about the one underneath.
Got it.
Because you can see where the commit dollars go on that SBRC vote we took, what was that, November, December?
I think it was in November, October, November.
Yeah, it was in the fall or early winter.
Yep.
And then the dollar amount below that is just discretionary dollars needed for surprise.
Somewhere along the line, that number must have been figured somewhere for it to be a dollar amount like that.
It's a carry amount. Yeah, I just want to be able to in clean conscience say that, not asking for anything that we don't absolutely need.
Right.
You know, it was kind of very pleasing to, and I still have a piece of paper on my desk at work where Brian sent it out, we were the lowest levy in the county, which has never been the case. But if we have to go up to service debt to operate the school district, then the ask is truly legitimate, and I would vote for it. I just want to be convinced that I need to move the debt service levy up. If we have, you know, bills that were unserviced, dollars that need, are needed, that we don't have, then you need to go find them, that's how we do it.
Right.
But once again, you look at the big ticket stuff, and we are already leaning dollars towards that stuff, sunsetting them in the coming fiscals. Anybody else like to speak to anything they see?
Yeah, I have a few questions. I'm just looking at that final page at some of the graphs here. So our budget enrollment headcount, for certified enrollment. I see that we're, our open enrollment is the highest that it's been for a while. Our open, our, our enrollment out is pretty stable. Where are these those going?
Who going?
The kids going out, you mean?
No, no, like our overall numbers. Why, do you, do we know why our just overall enrollment has been decreasing?
Our resident, our, our resident enrollment, resident student enrollment has been decreasing for eight years, probably. Our total served enrollment, we made that up through our positive open enrollment difference.
So basically our open enrollment in has increased as, at the same rate as our resident enrollment down has decreased.
More or less, yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of a really borderline alarming to see that chart in the lower left and the budget enrollment headcount. When you see it laid out like that so many years in a row.
I wouldn't say it's uncommon, especially with more, some of the bigger schools are taking big hits with the private schools and charter schools and other options are getting much more severely, but yeah, not a great thing to see.
But the chart right next to it, with the open enrollment, you know, is really encouraging, I think, in a way. We've been on the positive side of that ledger for 10 years.
My other question was, could you help me understand what's happening with our special ed surplus? Deficit, really?
Oh, our deficit, our deficit?
Yeah.
It's been going down, well, like fiscal, well, fiscal 25, I think it was 539 or something, 539,000. But just looking back when I was reviewing things before, it's been going down a little bit, but, but yet it's, I don't know, it's kind of hard to explain just because I've only went back maybe three or four years, but it's went down, I think this year fiscal 25, it went up again, more increase the deficit did.
And that's because our specialized students are having more needs, or where, why are we have, why is our deficit growing, you know?
We've got more costs that we're putting into special education. Whether it be teachers or more, more purchases for a student directly.
And is that 10% flow through from the AEA, is that making any sort of difference? I would, I probably would think so.
You mean for next year?
Yeah.
That's, that'd be hard to predict right now. I mean, basically the 100%, so the special ed next year, 100% of the district, that you've got to spend 90% of the AEA, right? What we don't know is, is that 90% going to cover the costs? I doubt it. I would hope that the 90 and the 10 would, but I don't know that either. We do have an upcoming meeting with Cindy Yellick, maybe next week or the week after. But I'm hoping to get some type of projections, because that's just the special ed side of it. We're still looking at different things with the debt services, because 100% of those dollars will come to us next year as opposed to the split that we have this year. So they're trying to determine what their prices are going to be and what they're going to offer. And it's really unpredictable, so if we said since not all of our money's flowing through, and we're having portions of it to us, will we have a surplus of those funds? I don't know the answer to that. Because costs are going up.
Couple lines that I like to pay attention to that, they mean something to me, I'm not sure what they mean to everybody else, but on page three, total property taxes levy is one I try and pay close attention to, and to me, that tells a, a better story than looking at just the levy rate. And our proposed budget here provides a 6.6 and 1/2% increase in total property taxes levied. The general fund.
Right, the general fund.
Just for whatever that's worth.
Yeah.
For better or for worse, I mean, that's just something I like to look at. You know, a lot of taxing entities will like to brag every time they keep their levy rate even or, or sometimes even reduce it. And I think the total property taxes levy tells a better story. A more accurate story. I see that, I'm not going to walk around town bragging about how we cut taxes, because clearly we didn't, or I won't.
And you don't have a choice, given the state aid?
Right, no, I understand, I'm not being critical at all, but I mean, I mean, it's just me thinking out loud, you know, how I think about it. Because even in a, you know, raising total property taxes levy at 6 and 1/2%, that's still going to result in just total general fund revenues of only 5.7%. That tells a story too. No, I mean, we're actually asking for more property taxes for people, from, from the people of Nevada. No commentary on it, it's just.
No, no, you're just talking about the math and where we are year over.
We have, yeah. No commentary, never mind.
My concern is that you may be handed your, from Des Moines until from the legislative level, on what you can and cannot do. And then it turns to us to make the hard choices of what you keep and what you put aside.
No, exactly.
I share your concern, and I have for some time on the enrollment, I'm easy. I have known it to be much bigger in my time, so you probably have the same story.
I have known it to be much bigger in my time, so we probably have the same story. Well, anybody else have anything they wish to ask Tammy or Dr. Gray? I think we've all kind of spoken, any concerns, there's quite a bit of information there. But as Tammy said, this is Brian's format a lot of the ways, some of this is pre-populated information. That it just is what we are, and here it is. I'd have to say if we generate this much heartburn for a district that's been so well managed or two, you know, going on two decades. I mean, if you had been in a district that wasn't that well managed, what you were, what you'd be dealing with. Because we do do a good job. But as Dr. Gray alluded to, when you get two or two and a quarter, you need to close a gap. You're a taxing entity, you can go ask your patrons of your district to close it for you. And so my concern is always going to be, let's not ask for anything we don't need, that's it. We don't have any other questions? Put this aside, we're going to revisit it here. Timelined it, I see you put it out at the front. In regards to what we got to do, we have a statute starting meeting. We're going to bring this back and vote on it here shortly. And your proposed levy amount is?
Thirteen point nine zero three one eight, which would be the amount listed on the taxpayer statement.
Okay. We will touch on that here shortly. But I would like, with everybody's permission, do you got anything to add?
Sorry, I'm still digesting. When do we know the estimated utility replacement dollars? When do you, when do you know what those are?
I'm not real, you mean, when, when will they let us know what those are? Because they, they send stuff out randomly, so I'm not real sure on that one, but I can.
Look, the reason I ask, when we're talking about that debt service levy, that seventeen thousand is not a minor amount. And if for some reason that replacement would not come through, or those dollars, yeah, replacement dollars, it would be substantially less. And I would have concerns about plan, lowering that debt service.
So we did give ourselves a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars of free cash, uncommitted cash.
We'll, we'll get the.
Well, yeah, but that's who, yeah, we're keeping the weeds on this, so.
I just, I, I've never asked what the timing is when the school's getting on about that, and I'm just curious. I'll find that out for you. Like you said, it probably isn't random.
On that said, I'd like to welcome Dr. Cody Asmus.
Actually, you get, we've got a couple, five point one, five point two.
Yeah.
We need the board to vote on five point one, which would be thirteen point nine zero three one eight.
Okay. Is that a motion? I can't make a motion. Sounded like a motion. Anybody want to backstop the good doctor? I'm so antsy to get you up here and go, it blew past me.
See, that's the ceiling you want to set?
Um, that's what you had in it. Wait, what did you, did you have something else?
Who, the ceiling we are going to set at the three point nine five?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I didn't, did you have that in here somewhere?
I didn't, no.
I'll let you have the recommendation then.
Okay, so, yeah, we would recommend to set the tax ceiling tonight for the taxpayer statement at the three point nine five.
Thirteen.
Or, sorry, the thirteen.
Yeah, I know, I, I was, I was there too, but I was going to let somebody else make the, yeah.
Thirteen point nine five three one.
And now she blushes.
I'm, I'm always ready.
Well, I don't know, Robert's rule is enough to know if the board secretary can make a motion, but it sounds good enough for me. Anybody got a second? Or if anybody would like to, just, she can't be, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'm trying to drag you out to make a motion.
To, uh, for the lev, to determine the levy at thirteen point nine five three one eight. Second.
Motion is second to approve the levies presented and proposed at thirteen nine five and change. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. We have a action of five point two on scheduling the next budget hearing for.
Yes, you're required to set a budget hearing A. I'm suggesting that that be prior to the regular, that will be a standalone meeting um, at our next regularly scheduled date, so I'm suggesting April seventh at six thirty P M.
Can I get a motion? Unless somebody else wants a different date. Anybody?
That's our next regular meeting, right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to establish budget hearing A for April seventh, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M.
Second that.
Motion is second to schedule our next, the budget hearing for April seventh at six thirty prior to the start of our regular scheduled meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Five point three, Dr. Asmus.
All right.
Thank you for spending your evening with us.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm here tonight for our annual D cap presentation, which is our district career academic plan. So our, the different topics that we have to cover here. So we'll do some background information, we'll go over our rubric and scoring feedback from last year. We have to do a, share our team, district team reflection on our goal pro, progress. So kind of put a stamp on last year and then start talking about this year, our district team, our goals, and then our intended student outcomes. So just some background here, I think this is my third year coming to present on this. And the fun part is every year we get a new document that we use and also a new rubric that we get scored against. So it's kind of a fun process in August, September to figure out what this year's plan document has to look like and how we're being scored. Uh, but this is part of our, our, part of the state code for the career and academic planning process for Iowa Administrative Code, Chapter forty-nine point five. Every student in grades eight through twelve have to create an individual career academic plan. And then in part of that, we have to have our own district plan. Um, the student plans are kept on file within the students cumulative folders. And then our district plan, we submit to our R P P each year. In the past, they've had a small team that scored it, I think it was three individuals, three or four the first year. Last year, that group expanded to the teens. And then this year, they're doing it completely different and they're asking for reps from each district to come and score a district plan. So I'll be part of that process, of course, not scoring ours, but scoring other districts. Um, so I only bring that up just to show kind of how things have evolved over the past couple of years with this state requirement. Two years ago, um, our score was twenty-four out of thirty-six. We didn't really make any huge substantial changes to our document. Just wanted to ensure that what we were actually doing in our day-to-day operations was indicated in our plan. Um, this year, our, our score went down five points, again, a different document, or excuse me, last year's plan, different document, different rubric. Um, so again, that makes it a little bit tricky. Uh, the scores are there, uh, they're, they're listed here in the document. There's also just some kind of quick snippets that came from the rubric, some feedback for us off of last year's plan, just for us to consider for this year's plan. Um, so our school board review, you can see we got a two out of three. Uh, they suggested more of a correlation to our district and team, our team and district strategies. Um, our team members, although they meet the requirements that were needed, they want us to look at maybe expanding that for this next year. Our district summary statement, they wanted more data involved. Our course planning, um, we got a three out of three out of that, so there really wasn't too much feedback on anything to change. Our work-based learning, um, wanted to, they thought there was partial progression, they wanted us to provide some more examples and opportunities for students in grades eight, eighth and ninth, which is that gets a little bit tricky just with our program and the opportunities we provide kids starting at tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade. Um, and kind of our thinking with this is we provide the information and, and make students knowledgeable at eighth and ninth grade before actually putting them out into work-based learning opportunities. There's five essential components that the D cap is scored on, self-understanding, career information, career exploration experiences, post-secondary exploration, and then career and post-secondary decisions. Um, essentially, looking through this, we kind of scored low because they didn't agree with the number of reflection opportunities that we have for students. So we're providing information, giving them opportunities, but not giving students the opportunity to reflect on those opportunities. So we're, yeah, that was the feedback, so trying to figure out ways to enhance that.
But if I could pause just a moment there, that, I saw that several places i- in the documents you provided about reflection. What's reflection mean in this context?
Yeah, so the way, oh, okay, so Dr. Einzweiler and I have gone, I want to say, three different times this year to, um, meet with other districts uh, across Heartland to kind of reflect on that exact question, right? Like, what does reflection look like? What does reflection mean? Um, providing it and then also having the students actually partake in it is kind of two different things. So an example would be, um, when we have a student that, or say we have a career fair, have the students going and taking a look at different career opportunities or a college fair. Then having an opportunity to come back to like their seminar and reflecting, like having a document for them to reflect on what they saw, what they're thinking, and how they can incorporate that into their D cap. So we haven't really done that in the past. Um, Zello does provide some reflection opportunities. Um, if you remember last year, I believe after the, this actual presentation, we asked to switch over to Zello. Um, and that was a cost to the district. With, Zello does have some embedded reflections within, so that was one of the key pieces. So in order for students to progress within their Zello progress, they do have to do some self-reflection on some different opportunities. So it naturally, hopefully, will fall in with Zello, we just didn't know last year what all those would look like. And also those have to be staff-generated as well to be put within each, each lesson, each activity.
Thank you.
So instead of just having the kids go and do these things, like a, a D Mac visit, I think all of our sophomores go and do a D Mac visit. We have our students partake in that, but according to the rubric, we don't provide the opportunity for students to reflect on their experience and how it can, like actually writing on paper or typing, how that can impact their decision-making in the future. Does that answer that for you?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, the other two areas are FAFSA advisement. Um, we did get dinged, if you will, on limited exploration of act, or excuse me, limited in the explanation of the activities that are taking part. So essentially, what we did is we took our FAFSA night and just put down the information that's covered. They want to see like the actual PowerPoint and the presentation that's taking place. They also, uh, wanted an increase in eighth and ninth grade advisement for students. And again, that's just a little tricky because feels like, you know, that if we had a FAFSA night for eighth and ninth graders, not going to be a whole lot of people that are going to be attending that. Um, even the ones that we have at the high school aren't super well-attended. Uh, but we do share the slides and the, and information with families just so they do have that. But, um, again, that's just kind of, the rubric says to do this and, you know, our philosophy just, you know, it's a little bit different once you're integrated within it, you know, to provide that for eighth and ninth graders. Um, the, our district plan integration, just wanted to look at some more, uh, specific details of how we're connecting the activities that we're providing students, whether it's work-based learning or, uh, college career-ready, um, to national best practices. So just another piece of feedback, um, for us. Um, our, our goals from last year, so we had three goals. Our first goal was continue to update our plan based on rubric feedback and figure out ways that we can enhance, um, our, our score to the score in rubric. Some things that we did, uh, we, there was feedback last year to increase concurrent enrollment opportunities or to include it within our plan. So we outline those more clearly in our high school course guide and then provide an actionable example in our plan. Um, increased reflection opportunities, you can see that was one. So, uh, for us, this was a two-year process. Um, year one was to implement Zello, and then now next year, we'll be into year two of Zello. Um, so having just a deeper understanding of what that looks like to increase those opportunities for our students. Again, the, the FAFSA advisement, um, or excuse me, advertisement to eighth and ninth graders. Um, again, this is difficult due to the age of the students. So we are listening to the feedback, um, and trying to get creative maybe with what that could potentially look like in the future. And then, uh, we also linked our district goals and our learner outcomes to our actual plan and our district initiatives within our document. Goal two was to increase our work-based learning opportunities. Um, again, the, the recommendation was to attempt to increase opportunities for eighth and ninth graders. Again, a little tricky for us, and I would say it might not necessarily like tie directly to, to the direction we're going with work-based learning or that we feel is, is the best use of our time in this area. Um, again, we're providing the information and be, and having the students knowledgeable in eighth and ninth grade, and then trying to provide as many opportunities as possible, tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade, that are a little bit more individualized. Um, we did put in that we're trying to integrate some things with ninth graders, just having looked at that. It's, it's just a little bit trickier to do for a wide variety of reasons, transportation's number one, scheduling, um, opportunities and pathways for students to have flexibility, specifically freshmen within their schedule, to be able to have two periods or a period free. To do some work-based learning opportunities is, is just a, a little tricky and, and in some cases impossible for us to be able to provide students. And then our last one, uh, goal that we had was directly tied to that transition to Zello. Um, just to be able to provide a, an increase in some inverse, interest inventory, surveys, post-secondary explorations. Those are all instilled within Zello, so the transition to Zello naturally would take care of, of these goals. So now taking that feedback and then trying to recreate, um, our plan for, for this year. Again, this was tricky because the document completely changed, um, some of the requirements changed, and then the score in rubric also changed. So Dr. Einzweiler and I, um, spent a lot of time making that transition and trying to take what we had previously and adopt it to, or adapt it to the new plan. Um, did take some time, um, and then also making some edits and some changes based off of feedback for how to enhance our, our score, if you will. Uh, first thing was our district team. Um, I will say, uh, this group did not meet all that regularly or all that much just because we were just in a transition period of taking what we had previously and changing it and adapting it to the new document. Um, our fingers were, are crossed that things won't change for next year, so we can have some more dialogue with this team and with this group um, for next year because hopefully our document doesn't change and how we're being assessed and scored doesn't change either. Uh, but you can see we have administrators from, um, our middle school, high school, and then myself. We have our school counselors from both the middle school, high school, C T E teachers, um, are listed, our secondary teachers. And you can see we do have some, um, dual roles being covered here by teachers that are also parents. Um, and then, uh, Elizabeth, Gan and Jody here and also serve on our district team. It is our intent to expand this, um, next year and involve a kind of more of a community presence. Again, it just gets really tricky when that document isn't consistent year to year and our plan isn't consistent and our requirements are consistent. So if we can see what that looks like, hopefully next year, we can enhance our team and, and expand that. Um, the, the group, we did do some reflection on this, so trying to search for ways that, uh, we can ensure career-based learning is meaningful for all students. Um, two areas that we focused on or that we recommended, I guess I should say, to focus on our inclusiveness and then our scaffolding on how it's, um, presented from an awareness and readiness standpoint um, to help students and structure supports for students. Also ensure that everything we're doing is actually embedded within our regular coursework and our school activities. And then again, coming back to, um, being able to provide reflection pieces as possible. I will say these four points directly are from the Zello programming, and it just fits naturally, um, within our D cap requirements and trying to provide the most enhanced individual career plan possible for our students. Um, our emphasis, uh, again, this is just directly tied, the verbiage that's coming from the new rubric. Um, it is essentially focused on developing short and long-term. Is essentially focused on developing short and long-term goals to carry out the intended outcomes that. The state has for our D cap and then what we want to provide our students from their own individual career academic plan. So our first goal for this year was to improve our D cap score based on our annual feedback. This year we scored, well, I guess I should say last year going into this year, we scored a nineteen out of thirty-six. Again, all the, all the scores are listed there. One recommendation that came from the DE when we were working with them on looking at our rubric and looking at our plan, how can we enhance things? Is focusing on one of the components annually. So basically making this like a five-year process. So year one, we would focus on component one, year two, we would focus on another component, year three and so on. And then FAFSA also seemed like an easy one for us to just be able to enhance, just kind of the way that we had done things before. And some things that are presented within Zello and some different presentations. So those became short-term goals for us. FAFSA advisement and then essential component one, which is self-understanding. Our district statement summary just needed to be reworded and just kind of recrafted a little bit to better. Maybe depict exactly what it is that our programming now offers based off of Zello. Our long-term goals then will, will fall back on our career information, career exploration and then career and post-secondary decisions. And we're hopeful this will be approved or, you know, looked upon. In a high manner from this, from our, the individuals that'll be scoring our plan. Again, if it comes back that we need to tackle each component annually. It's, it's gonna be tricky for us to be able to do that just because of all of the different components that are listed there and all the different things that we have working. So this is kind of what we've decided as a team, develop these short-term goals and then tackling some long-term goals as the years go on. Goal number two is focused specifically on FAFSA. So with this, we tried to be more data-driven. So you can see the number of students that we have previously that completed FAFSA. Forty-eight percent two years ago, fifty-two percent last year. Our goal then for this year was fifty-five percent and our goal for the following year. Is sixty percent. The feedback said that essentially we didn't have a whole lot of quantitative. Goals or quantitative data to be able to share. Previously, we just said, this is what we present and we hope all students attend. Being able to go back and get some hard data, hopefully will give us more actionable items. Some action steps are listed there that we have done this year. So partnering, partnering with the Iowa College Access Network or ICAN to provide a parent financial information night. Previously, we did all the work basically for the FAFSA night. Now partnering with them is just a little bit of a more enhanced experience and we thought maybe having another name tied to it, an agency tied to it. It could increase the opportunity for students and parents to attend. And then hopefully ultimately complete the information or complete FAFSA to increase our participation rate. One tricky thing that is involved with this, just some raw data. The class of two thousand twenty-three, we had just a shade over sixty percent of our students in that class were going to post-secondary opportunities. So sixty-two percent is the actual number there to go in. That means thirty-eight aren't. There isn't really a need for those individuals to complete FAFSA. So that's just one thing to, to think on and just kind of, I guess, be mindful. As we're trying to provide as many career-ready opportunities as possible. And information while also trying to make sure our students are prepared for post-secondary opportunities. But that shift, you know, is almost even, you know, now sixty, forty percent, I guess, isn't quite. But there's just a shift in, in that that we're seeing essentially more students choosing. More, a higher percentage of students choosing not to go to college, instead choosing to go right into the workforce. So trying to balance that. The goal from the state is to have a hundred percent completion percentage for districts for FAFSA. If that's obtainable, I, I don't know. You know, again, with only sixty-five percent of our kids going on to post-secondary opportunities. It seems like that could be tricky for us to accomplish. And then our third goal, again, this is we're developing those short and, and long-term, long-term goals. So again, we're trying to address one to two essential components each year. Enhancing that opportunity, enhancing that reflection opportunities based off of Zello. And then, you know, tackling the next essential component the following year and then the next essential component, the next year, just based off of feedback. So essentially we'll be looking very closely next year at our feedback for essential component one. Hopefully see what changes we made, if there's anything else that needs to occur. While also then taking strongly into consideration the feedback that we're receiving on essential component two. The next year we'll be looking at one and two and then also focusing at three and so on until we have all five. Essential components tackled and improved within our D cap. Our intended outcomes, again, this is straight from the rubric essentially for, for what we should be providing I cap. What should be provided within our I caps is to ensure that students have the opportunity to explore and identify various career interests. And also college interests as well that directly ties to their strengths and then developing goals. Ensure that academic planning is occurring that supports those career aspirations. We are in a unique situation where every single student in grades, oops, sorry. Every single student in grades nine through eleven have the opportunity to have a one-on-one schedule and meeting, either with our school counselor. Our high school principal or our high school assistant principal where they go through their interests, the master's schedule. And then kind of develop their own schedule based off of their interests and kind of their desires. That's not normal to be able to have students basically have like a one-on-one meeting to be able to determine their schedule for the following year. Another kind of component of that and our goal is to take information within Zello from those interests, interest surveys. To work with students. This is kind of what Zello has shown. How does this play a role potentially in your planning in the future? Not only for maybe their next year of school, but then as they get older, their junior, senior year. And then on to whether it's career opportunities or post-secondary opportunities. Also trying to engage students in as many work-based learning opportunities as possible. That happens through apprenticeships, business internships for us. And then lastly is ensuring that students are making informed decisions about their post-secondary opportunities, potential trainings they might need. And then employment opportunities for those that are jumping right into the workforce. All right, that's a lot of information for you as it seems to be each year. Again, our, our intended goal is just to ensure what we're having, the opportunities we're providing students to reflect on their individual career academic plan. Directly correlates to what's actually being on the verbiage part of our district plan. And ensuring again that we're providing post-secondary learning, work-based learning opportunities. And then most importantly now, reflection opportunities with our students and being able to debrief with a trusted adult. Whether it's their seminar teacher, their Cub Connection leader, administrator, school counselors, whoever it might be. So we're kind of working together to ensure that they're ready for success the second that they graduate from the Nevada High School.
Question for you, kind of general, about the general scoring rubric and the process of upgrading this. So first of all, so you mentioned this last year, everything kind of changed. Am I also in the impression that this has kind of changed for the last three years in general?
Yep, so we've yet to have.
Been very consistent then basically.
Yeah, it hasn't. The documents changed every year and then the score in rubric changed, has changed every year also. This is the first year that we have had next year score in rubric to be able to kind of look off of. Cause that's changed as well. So yeah, that has been, you know, a challenge. I'm a competitive person, Dr. Einzweiler is competitive. So, you know, we want to try and get the highest score possible. But more importantly, we want to ensure what we're putting on in our plan is actually what's taking place. Over there and using the, the rubric and the different things that are being provided each year. To take a look and see, okay, yeah, how can we enhance this? How can we provide more reflection opportunities? How can we ensure that students are prepared for work-based learning or going right into the workforce? And then also making informed decisions on post-secondary opportunities.
So, so people doing the scoring, have they been the same throughout or I assume they're changing as well? Scoring, first of all.
I believe two, three years ago, it was a small group of individuals. I don't know occupations or if they were Department of Ed or within the RPP or, or who they were.
What organization, I guess, is, is doing the scoring?
I don't even know. I know this year it's.
Black box.
Yeah, I know this, just because of all the changes. Well, I, and I think I've shared this with the board two years ago, three years ago. I worked with our plan and then at the time I was shared with Colinesco and, and worked theirs as well. Theirs was very much correlated to ours, but it was much smaller in scale to the opportunities that were being provided. And their score was much higher than the Nevada score, which having written both of them, I don't know how you would be able to score that. So I only bring that up just to show that there, you know, we can't get too caught up in like what our rubric score is. I think it's gotta be more about the feedback that's, you know, being provided, not whether it's a two or a one or a three. What is it that we can, how can we improve those areas? This year it is actually practitioners that are gonna be scoring. So like I'll be scoring in other districts. Another administrator, it could be a principal, it could be central office from another district will be scoring ours. A team, I should say, not just one individual. So hopefully it'll be a little bit more concrete. And a little bit more substantial feedback with people that are actually like in the field.
I imagine that's frustrating for the team as well, but I think more important part is, like you said, it's consistent within our district.
Yeah.
Obviously, we have a plan, so I have faith in you guys that will make this, make this better. But I don't feel like it's a, it's as dire as this looks.
Based on what you said, it sounds like, so the state, their goal is for everyone to complete the FAFSA, but they also want. The, everything provided to be inclusive of every student that wants, or those students too that don't want to go to college.
Yep.
Looking at what we offer, cause a lot of things nowadays are still focused on that college track. Is that population of students who are, who already know college is not for me, I'm not gonna do that. Are they providing feedback as for our program? Like are they saying, are they, I guess, not participating as much? Because they feel like things are tailored more to that other track.
Yeah, I, the feedback that, so essentially I, I guess that to me that would fall like on work-based learning opportunities. That we're providing kids, apprenticeship opportunities, working with students that might have an interest in. Having some, like I said, work-based learning, business internship opportunities within their day. The feedback we're getting score-wise is that we're doing a great job providing the opportunities for eleventh and twelfth graders. Can we increase that down to ninth and tenth and eighth graders? And that's where it just, you know, gets a little bit tricky with that. The other piece of feedback that I received is increasing reflection opportunities. For students after they complete their business internship. They do write like a reflection. But having been in that seat and I even know now, it's, it's kind of more just like a check and balance. And talking through with the student on whether that was a beneficial opportunity or timing for them. Do they want to continue in that field or is it derailing them and wanting them to go in another, you know, direction? I don't know if that answers your question directly. I mean, they don't, it, it, it's hard, I think also at times for other individuals who aren't. Able to talk with us about, okay, what does business internship look like? What do your apprenticeship opportunities look like? And it's just going off a paper and reading it. So like I said, I think the feedback has been, it's great that we're providing the opportunities. Is there a way to increase the opportunities and increase the reflections to ensure through that one-on-one dialogue, student, adult. Kind of what they learned essentially from it and what the next steps are.
So are all our students who are wanting to pursue kind of a work-based learning avenue. Do we have enough opportunities to match every student or has that been difficult because we don't have the business?
Yeah, so it's typically roadblocks that get in the way or flexibility with scheduling. So if a student isn't like on pace or above pace, if you will, to graduate, they don't have the flexibility to be able to have that during their school day. That's roadblock number one. Roadblock number two, I would say is kind of the avenue you're going. It's just ensuring that we're able to establish that connection with outside agency within either Nevada, Ames, wherever it might be. Just to be able to provide that opportunity. We do run into some insurance issues. Sometimes for our younger students, that's another roadblock for fifteen, fourteen, sixteen-year-olds also. Is the company has to have some insurance built in for those individuals. So I, I think we are doing a good job with it. It's kind of, it, it's up and running. It's known and it's been going on for six, seven years. So I think kids know more about it. And also honestly, nine times out of ten, when they're coming in and telling administrator, school counselor about an opportunity. They've kind of already set it up, right? So they already have something in place or have already talked to somebody. I'd like to do this. Is it possible? Yes. Now the next step is just basically okaying it with the administrator. So it's almost kind of like worked backwards, if you will.
What percentage of our work-based learning experiences are such that the students are bringing their own work? Based learning, the goals to us versus the other way around where we're helping them explore? Do you have an idea of what that looks like?
High, I would say, yeah. The students that are taking advantage of it. Again, just because they've heard of it or they know that it's out there. Or they might have a situation where they're going to work right after school and just extending the hours. Now they're not getting paid for it, but it's a win for the employer because they're, they're earlier. And it's a win for the student because they're able to get a, a pass credit as long as they do what they're supposed to do. But, you know, it increases the hours and it's kind of a win-win in, in some of those situations. The apprenticeship, I will say, has been difficult to be able to get kids to jump on board with that. And to be completely honest, it's a money issue. I think pay seventeen fifty, sixteen fifty right now, something like that an hour. And I run into a number of conversations where they already have an opportunity for a job where they're getting paid twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour. Try and communicate with the student, the ceiling of what the apprenticeship could lead to. You can go to college for free and you can jump in to that field and, you know, your ceiling could be much higher with that as opposed to what you're doing. But students thinking the now as opposed to thinking, or think about more today as opposed to thinking about tomorrow or later down the lines at times. But we're still trying, you know, to provide as many opportunities apprenticeship-wise as possible and get students engaged in those.
On the FAFSA, I can never say that. FAFSA. Completion rates. Do they, does the data just look at high school graduates? Or does it look at those that have graduated, taken a gap year and then?
Yeah, the only, the only report that we're able to get is like class of two thousand twenty-three, class of two thousand twenty-four. So it, it wouldn't give us like class of two thousand twenty-two, two or three years later on down the line.
That's unfortunate, I think, of the whole, getting to a hundred percent of nightmare, dress that, but I guess I just did. I can think of in the past six, eight years, the number of kids that took that one or two years off to earn money, save up for college.
Yeah, we do get a report up to two years, just students, graduates that are enrolled in post-secondary opportunities. I, I don't know off the top. I could go back and check. I, I know it's in our report. I don't know what it is or where it goes. To be honest, I paid more attention to the number of students that we have going in right away. Just to, you know, if that number gets fifty-fifty, we've got to, you know, equal, equally balance. Providing opportunities and information to both when we're getting kind of pressure that it, you know, it's gotta be. Everybody's gotta have post-secondary, everybody's gotta have career and it's, it, it's tricky to be able to provide that if there isn't an interest. Especially when we're talking with seventeen and eighteen-year-olds who know everything.
We're gonna approve a slug of early graduations. Of those people, have any of them filled out a FAF, their family unit filled out a FAFSA application?
I'm not sure. I could check.
If we're looking to raise the score and we're allowing people to step away, maybe the other, the stepway process is the fact that. We'd like to see a successful FAFSA application. You got a captive audience.
Yeah, I, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, what's the practicality of that besides having a higher score? If those students already know, I'm not going to college, well then you're just pushing paper.
Yeah, and, and I get it, but the thing is, we're getting scored. Well, the score is just. Well, the score is just feedback, I mean. All I'm just trying to do is just raise the score. I get it.
We don't feel huge pressure, right, that like we have to have kids, you know, taking the FAFSA.
You are looking to raise your.
We're trying to, yes, without putting unneeded pressure on a population of people that, you know, or. They know what they wanna do. FAFSA has nothing to do with it.
Also need your parents' assistance, right? My son's going in electrical trades. I'm not doing the FAFSA with him. Like, that's just not gonna happen. That's a waste of both of our time. That's a waste of both of our time. So.
So you're gonna be one of the statistics that's gonna hold our score back?
But I think that just, that right there goes to show like.
Exactly that.
There's no need to make kids do something that, and families that they, that doesn't correlate to what it is, you know, that 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 they need. They'd like us to have every student have a work-based learning opportunity. Yeah, that sounds great, you know, on on paper, making a graduation requirement, well, it. There's a lot of different things involved with that.
Change, not the uh, not a.
Honestly, our goal, what we're looking to is just be able to increase. Um, the opportunity and the knowledge base for families to be able to decide. Is this something I need to do, I want to do, I have to do, and just becoming more visible, I guess, with that.
Actually, a number of our early graduate applicants are. Judging by their letter, planning it to go to college. Not all of them, but a decent number of them.
Well, that is what you do read.
I was glad to see FAFSA advisement. Um, among your, you know, short-term goals. Having a, uh, being a parent, having gone through that a couple of years ago. I remember FAFSA information night or something like that. I think it was in the fall. Didn't think that was all it could be. And it was, certainly wasn't all I expected. I don't know what I really expected because I'd never been through it before. But um, ICAN was a part of that. In fact, it pretty much put the whole thing on. And just to be blunt, I kinda felt like I was being marketed more than informed.
That's why we went away from them, to be honest. It's why we kinda went a different direction and just did our own thing. For a couple of years.
So they haven't been a part of it for a couple of years?
Well, they, yeah, we we tried to do like our own FAFSA night, um, just because of of that and.
Maybe they weren't. Maybe my memory's a little bit off, but um.
No, we we've had one in the fall and then one in the spring previously. It was tied to conferences in uh, the spring. Kinda double, we're trying to do the double whammy and increase attendance at conferences and. It didn't increase attendance at conferences, it just had people come at seven o'clock to go to the FAFSA information night.
Yeah, we, it, and I understand, it's it's complex and there's some sort of a connection between ICAN and. Iowa Student Loan. But they're in the process of kind of becoming different, separate entities. And I know we've had change in our. Counseling staff since then in the past couple of years, so I I would be curious to see what. How a a FAFSA information night currently looks different from what it did two and a half years ago when we went through it. Because just to be blunt, I didn't find it very helpful at all. Um, the whole FAFSA thing is ridiculously complex and like you said. I wouldn't waste a minute on it if didn't have to. Yeah, and 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 I see part of it. One of the ideas that's been presented is to have, encourage students to complete the FAFSA, you know, during seminar and like that and I don't know how. A kid could do that on their own.
You couldn't, yeah, you you could get through a couple clicks and a couple things, but it'd be more like, okay, this is. We've got this part, this is what you need now from your your parents. They have to be able to provide some of that information.
Right, you're not just gonna have your parents W two. We're last year's earnings.
And there's also a population of people that it might be small, but they know they're not gonna get anything financial aid-wise. That they're not gonna qualify. So again, why are they going through, you know, the wringer with this and the time and the headache that it can be?
You kinda have to, don't you? I mean, don't the schools kinda make you do it, sort of, like?
I think it depends on the school.
That was kind of our experience was that, okay, well, you know.
I think it depends. Um, I think some schools s- still do make you do it because there might be other. Uh, scholarships or such and they're saying unless you've got that filled out, whether you qualify or not, we're not gonna let you be eligible for this stuff. But I don't think all, I I don't know about state universities, I don't. They didn't used to require state universities. As an absolute must, I don't know if they are now, but I do know some of the private colleges require it.
That, from my memory, that seems to be. Consistent with what I remember is, it was the private schools that. That required that a little more.
Because a lot of those private schools too, you know, they're, they've got this enormous tuition. And then they've got all these different ways that they're gonna help you carve that down. And so, and then FAFSA can too, but even if FAFSA doesn't, they want that information. To some of their local stuff, yeah.
It it's a ridiculously complex thing to go through for a seventeen-year-old and. A lot of seventeen-year-olds, you know, a lot, they may not have the family support they need to help them do that. So, um. And if the goal is sixty percent, you know, that might be sixty students a year. And and one-on-one counseling, uh, and assistance for the FAFSA, that would be. Probably heavy lift to give that individually to each one, but um. But I'm I'm just glad to hear that was a. Heavily discussed topic in this, uh, cause I think there's room for. Improvement there, definitely.
I I mean, seeing that as a a one or whatever you wanna look at, I mean, that. Does kinda jump out, right? Like, okay, what can we do to enhance that? This is significant to the families that are. Exploring or the students that are exploring post-secondary opportunities, what what can we do to help that and prepare them?
Since twenty eighteen, I've been one of the families that Eric Danielson is my best friend. He knows I'm gonna sign up every year and. I I go to ICAN and they just do it for free. I mean, it's the best service ever to just. Be able to pull your tax statement, have them just run it for you and. So I mean, even if it's pushing that out if, as we can. I fell for the marketing.
I did, I I think I was. Yeah, I, we didn't pursue ICAN assistance individually, but that might have been more us, me, than anything else.
Involve taxes, I ran, for help.
As usual, I tried to tackle it on my own and that's probably the source of a lot of my frustration.
But I did learn this year, when Rhett and I were talking with Eric. If you're under eighteen, you cannot do it by yourself. So, I mean, the push for that one hundred percent. Unless you have the parental involvement, you'll never get there. You have kids that are not gonna have the parental involvement.
The other, that was the one thing I uh, as I read, prepared for this meeting was. You know, the FAFSA advisement and and the other thing on my mind was the community involvement. And you addressed both of those in your plan going forward, so. Good work out of you. You read my mind. No, this is, this is a, an enormous task, enormous document. The document that was kinda provided. Separately from the agenda. Is is that the document you say is provided by the state?
Yeah, so we get that template. And then um, have to take last year's template, which is different, and then re-enter it. Um, the tricky part is the headings. If if you look within the sections before, it just had. Like who the people are and that was it. Now it's what individuals and what is their role? And that's, it's it's very redundant um, throughout the document and it's. Just a little tricky also. Then there was a whole new section this year on work-based learning. Tying it to workforce development and. It's not, it's not like what's going on, it's just your ability to connect those two. It's just a lot of time and reflection.
No, I agree with you, you know, I'm competitive as the next person as far as scores and wanting to be. Scores and ranks and wanting to be good there, but you know, what's much more important is the work that's actually being done. You clearly put a lot of thought and uh, preparation into that.
Good discussion. Anybody else got any last thoughts? Well, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, so next step, this is, I have to submit the plan here the last week of March and then, I wanna say April, the second week of April. Which for us is ISAP test due, but that's okay. Is when we're getting together and doing scoring on rubrics and feedback to plans.
Yeah, so we're recommending your approval, so Dr. Asmus can get this submitted.
I will move approval of the district career readiness plan as presented by Dr. Asmus this evening.
Motion is second, all in favor. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Asmus.
You bet.
Did you add a B C as being president at the last meeting in the minutes? You seconded some, some motions.
Leanne wasn't here. I wasn't here.
Right, I was here, okay.
Yeah, we were all here, okay. Good catch.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's listed as not present, but she's listed as having seconded some motions.
For whatever reason, I missed to check her off.
Yeah, I wasn't here, the previous, the one before that.
Jamie, do you still plan on providing a P card summary?
Yes.
I can't remember when the last time we had one of those was, but.
Yeah, I I actually have a few that I need to get. I realized that they weren't coming through on my board report when I do, because we did them as a journal entry. So I do have. A few months of that to present to you guys, so I'll make sure I have that for you.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I know it's it's not something we typically get every month, so. I noticed some of the early graduation requests are kind of, uh. Some of them are dated really at the beginning of the school year, and we're just considering them here tonight. Is that, um. Why why might there be delays like that? Just kinda wait and see what happens?
It's like, yeah, um, this is my intent. And then, once they actually meet the requirements, then it'll get processed and signed off on, yeah. Tom started. I think Leanne speaks for a lot of us, so this is a motion or action.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda as placed for us tonight, all in favor. Opposed? Board member comments, seven one.
Um, one thing I was gonna mention is, um, at the end of the board retreat on Saturday. A few of us were commenting how uh, how we enjoyed meeting in that conference room. Um, and we were wondering if there'd be a possibility of meeting in the conference room for regular board meetings at some point. I know the limitation would probably be camera system.
So I made a note, I'm going to speak to John about the live feed possibilities there. Obviously, depending on. The agenda or something happening in our community, if we, we could always, if we were able to anticipate, yes. Move it back. But I will um, let you all know. How much it would take. I don't know that it would take that much.
I think one thing is, is the acoustics are better in that room for. Ease of hearing for a lot of people and just more intimate settings, probably better for this group anyway.
You saw that on Saturday? Helps dialogue.
Yeah, definitely.
Food is nice, too.
I did not have that.
Hell, you gotta ask. Mr. Subliminal here.
Mind her that it's the musical this weekend?
Yep, I will be there Sunday.
I think I might have extra tickets for Saturday. Um, and my apologize, apologies for Saturday, in case you didn't catch my yawning tonight. I know Marty did. Um, our family's on overnight shifts and I just simply slept right to alarms. I am. I just, I I feel bad. And it wasn't till Dr. Gray sent the email about I P R S and I'm like. Oh, and I realized what day it was.
So they gave you the rest.
If you knew the rest of the Saturday, yeah.
Excellent uh, input. Excellent Saturday, it was well, and everybody participated. And uh, makes me look forward to retreats when they're done like that. And I'd like to thank Leanne. I'd like to thank Leanne here tonight, too.
I didn't even take a debate.
My cyclone colors.
It is a thing now. Let me see, you wanna put some adult content into this? I can't say it, huh? All right, next meeting will be in April. We finalize finalize our levy. We will know more by then.
We'll get you the, that service rationale and breakdown.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you for the meeting.